Motion by Tom and second by Carly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right, item 3A, we have our student spotlight here, Dr. Slender. Would you like to introduce this?
Yes. This is our inaugural student spotlight for the school here and recommended by one of our strongest teachers in the primary center, Mr. Pelton. Mr. Pelton and Mrs. Rachel Johnson are here, our principal. Tell us a little bit about Annie. Can we bring Annie up here maybe a minute?
Yeah. I've asked her twice.
Just want you to step here if you don't mind. Yes. Tell us all about Annie.
So what I've noticed just from day one, your kindness toward your peers, your strong leadership skills, you always show up for others, you care about others in class, you have a great sense of humor, but you really embody the Viking spirit and you're just an outstanding person and you're a great leader in class and a great student all around and you make our culture better, so really grateful for you.
Sure if you were other words, he is compassionate, a leader, a model, kind, approaches every situation with grace, that means like even if something's tough, you're just like, we got this. Demonstrating strong leadership, emotional maturity, and he said you like truly, if any kid could be, wanna be someone, they would be like you, respectful, responsible, ready. Congrats.
Let's give her a round of applause. You've got your own band club over here. Who are all these wonderful people?
Some people have video.
Picture me, I'm so busy, you'll get me no time.
Can you tell us who everybody's who this is?
So that's my great grandma. One of the first is my grandma and then also my grandpa, grandma, great grandma, and dad, my brother, and my mom.
It's so lovely to have you all here to support Annie. We know it starts at the home and so on behalf of our Board of Education and the school that you're working with for you both and what you do to help support our young people. I have on behalf of the Board a certificate that we would like to give you and I hope that you have a special place at your home that you can put this. Do you have a good idea where this might go?
No, I already have one and I haven't hang it up.
You've got all these awards after that, I recognize. But I hope you'll wear this probably, this is a Viking pin.
That's probably.
And then would you be willing to take a picture with your family and Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Pelton and I have a friend in Mr. Schlungen, he gets to work very closely with your school, he'd love to take a picture with you.
Sure.
Let's do that outside, what do you say here? Scott, could you take a picture of this one?
We're in the hallway. Oh, it's got, I'm pretty sure that one's not.
All right. All right. All right. All right. She truly does that.
I know, thank you. When my father passed and I can have like a big picture like, there's all stuff around here, then I had a picture, I was like, hey, can you like, you know, like five minutes, actually, there you go. And it was absolutely the perfect picture.
Don't feel bad, just say I'm unstable. I know. I've heard of something that needs to be improved. I actually love it, postseason is hard. It's so hard. I know. I've got a good time to go to this, right? I need some first run. I came out naturally. I knew it was wrong that I would say that, but she was that one. I know. I know. I've heard, you know, at the conference in Seattle, there's so, kids from Chicago, so many people from Northern Illinois, so somebody was just sad today. It's amazing. Pretty good. I mean, you're probably around this, because there were no rumors that the place was open. So if you wanted to watch this, it's there. So that's all my rights. And I treat it as a surprise. Why, beautiful. Because it's just, of course, he's not an author, he has a fighting for it. He's over, but Henry has personality that doesn't play that much. So, Julie, I have to talk to you. If he showed up, it's like his world would be on fire. It works. I'm really tired, she's told. She's in her fourth year, she's the one who is. The person who, how to work. Oh, she's taken a whole brother semester, and I sent her, I was like, is anyone, have you ever heard of this? Oh, absolutely, I'll figure it out and I, I totally get that, so I appreciate that. I think so, and I sent her, and she wants six, so I was like, I wasn't sure. Out there, we will set up an introduction, maybe why you're interested. Bigger than graphics, not often, like the marketing or branding, that's one thing. Oh, are you just like, come somewhere? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So she said, you know, something, yeah, that, you've done it all, it's like, yes, like the shit, like that. What do I need to do? And they have an internship, but it is for, oh yeah, it's like defining designing fonts, it's designing, it's like a font, not just like, like, things. That's precise. It's always the first thing I get, stuff I gotta write, so I'm grateful, because it's very, it's like, it's, I'm very challenged, I'm just sort of, and one night all your mom just goes through. Especially if you take five years, and three years, it's like, whoa.
Bring it back, you have a successful picture. Good to go. Do we have any training building good news here? I think she was getting ready to step away. Okay. I apologize. That is fine. Then we're up at citizen comments. Yes, could you meet the Mrs. Schlefer, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Hello, Mike, Tracy and I are here today representing P-Play and grateful for the space and this time, but I actually want to tell you, we just attended the National Conference for P-Play, it was in the Chicago area this weekend, and the Mount Hope chapter was awarded an outstanding chapter award. So we are so proud and just really, we're just delighted to be able to communicate and connect with the three states and sixty-eight chapters represented and to talk to everyone there and what everyone who might have disconnected to the school boards, to our local events, is one of the most important things we can do. So, and I think that had something to do with why we were selected. So for that, I thank you for your time and all you do for our council. I've been here this long for hours.
Dr. Slender, do we have anyone else?
I was only interested in myself, registered.
All right. They'll queue you into school news, but leave us off. Wow, that is, that's hard to follow. Congratulations, we're so proud for you and all that you do in supporting our young people each and every day, especially that which goes unnoticed, we appreciate you very much. I want to recognize a couple of students who were just recognized by AP testing. We have seven Mount Hope High School students who will receive national recognition by the College Board, my notes are on the screen, you can see them there. Samantha Hansen, Ethan Gage, Kate Green, Lily Nelson, Maggie Ullman, Anna Tranall, and Joseph. Now, all of these students are people that you would expect around our district because they're so well thought of, they're just high achievers, not only in the classroom but around our campus as leaders, so I congratulate those individuals, that's no easy achievement. I also thought it might be time, as we're heading into the middle of October already, my word, to put a bow on some of the regular season play and give you some updates as to where some of our high school students are at. In fact, we had one student, Ms. Nicewander, who was spending the afternoon golfing at the state tournament, how great is that? And was so proud of her. I don't know how things played out for her, but knowing her, she just handled it with great calm and grace and class, she's just a neat young woman. Our boys soccer, they're getting ready to host West Salem here in the coming days as part of a regional semifinal match. Our volleyball bracket, although it hasn't been finalized yet, they're getting ready for some Division II play also happening on the same night as our boys soccer. And then we'll take in our boys football team, a Level One, likely host on October 24th, which is that Friday night, and then hopefully when we win, like the Chicago Bears will win tonight, they'll go on to play on October 31st. And then I also want to recognize our girls swim team, they're going sectionals already November 8th, where does the fall go? And then I wanted to remind families that on the 23rd of October, we're having a special family engagement night and that topic is around the concept of sextortion, this is a new term to me and maybe to you as well. The community session is going to be held by one of the detectives, a fellow by the name of Detective Blank from the Dane County Sheriff's Office, he's going to talk to us about what it is and why it's becoming more and more prolific and how we help students who find themselves in the circumstance of being involved in these certain, these issues. It's quite sad, quite frangy dastardly as to what people are doing to harm other individuals. So come on out, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM the 23rd. That same evening, we'll have our fall concerts at the middle school and as you can see, we're also going to be hosting some volleyball and some boys soccer that night as well. So lots of great things happening here at the Home of the Vikings, our kids continue to make this proud and our loving staff continue to make opportunities happen for our young people. That's a lot. Do you have any school news to bring forward?
Okay, yeah, a few things, there's been open houses at some schools at the intermediate center, it's on October 2nd, and there's a lot of nice artwork to see and the students get to meet their parents into discussion on what they've been learning. And then the primary center open house will pass Thursday at 9:00. And the same thing, there's lots of great artwork from the kids and lots of excitement from the kids taking their parents through the schools. And field trip season has been going on a little bit too, I know the fourth grade took some time to go to Indian Lake County Park and did some hiking and learned a little about nature as they were learning some things based on their lessons in school.
Thank you, Tom. Jessica?
A few other items that I thought of, October is National Principals Month, we are very, we have excellent principals in our district. This week is school lunch week and I know the, I've been seeing the post, they're doing all kinds of school, extra school lunch stuff this week. The High School Musical, the tickets went on sale, that's November 13th through the 15th. I had written down to congratulate the P-Play folks, so congratulations to the guys. And then, are you, Adam, going to talk about our back to the regional dinner in the Greater Dane?
If you would like to lead off on that, I'd be glad to chime in.
Well, sure. The regional dinner was not last week, but it was the week before. We had a nice discussion in terms of what our priorities were, there, Carly, you've gone before, there's always someone who speaks and then there's some activities at the table, so Adam, Dr. Slender and I got to spend some time talking about priorities and how we wanted to communicate them out of the district. And then we had a legislative update that was interesting and useful. And then the Greater Dane County Consortium meeting was just the other night and we spent some time talking about the aid characteristics to make effective school boards, talked a little bit about board and how we could be as a group most effective, talked a little bit about having liaisons from each of the different school boards that could kind of meet together to develop priorities and those forward, because the Madison School District now has like a paid obvious basically, so she could kind of help lead efforts and put together. Carly, it seemed like something we'd be figuring. So, yeah, I don't know, those are my initial starts. Do you want to chime in and add to those?
Yeah, oh, that was a really good list and that last one jumped out at me a lot just about the ability to build that as a platform, everyone was talking about how the unified front last year on the focus issue brought results, maybe not the exact results that we targeted, but at least put it out there, put it on the legislature to come up with some solutions to answer to that question. This is obviously a non-budget year, but there was still discussion over making the most out of that time, whether that's laying the groundwork for the ask next year. I also had it through my head, if there were any other issues that weren't necessarily money related, but something that we could maybe build some bridges with some of the representatives on. And one of the, there was some areas superintendent that stood up and just mentioned about, you know, we need to have a unified front, it's helpful, a unified fund as Dane County, it's also be thoughtful about what issues connect with rural districts around the state, because there's just, there's obviously a lot of folks represent those areas and it'll mean a lot more to them if it's not kind of one area which is kind of a place of power and privilege in this state, if it's something that's more, a little bit more broad-based. So I thought it was a very good discussion on it and it seemed like there was a lot of consensus over pooling our resources again, bringing resources, which was a good platform. Really, and just for everyone else too, loved the discussions at the table for this one, it was fantastic, they kind of forced us to move to other tables, not just sit with the Mount Hope contingents and talk, which is great in its own right, but just to hear some of the circumstances and concerns that districts have. I feel like I generally come away from those feeling pretty good about where we're at, about what we do on a regular basis, the situation we face, but there was three, four ideas that I picked up, I was like, that's something I'd love to incorporate here.
I agree.
Yeah. There have been two more meetings this year.
Yeah, January and April?
That's right, yeah, 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 yeah. Yes, yes. Does anyone else have any other school news to bring up? See, the only other thing that I was going to mention is just, we've had some discussion about school liaison role and I think that everyone's done this in their own right, I didn't hand out a list of some potential questions that we could keep top of mind. The big thing was, from my point of view, was just making sure that we were state-connected to the school, I know you all put a ton of time into it, but I caught myself last year being dragged into a lot of other areas rather than making enough school visits, as many as I intended to make, and so just in urging again to have like one, at least one report a semester from the school or other organization that we're tied to, I'll kind of fill in the gaps too as the president without any specific allocations, but just areas where I feel like I can bring some input like directly from the field and some understanding what people are facing out there to help us inform decisions that we're making. So again, this is not like meant to be a prescriptive, this was just a, hey, some, something that we could go on, we're walking in there and it might have some commonality to it, we're coming back with a report that we can make more actionable. And that was, that was all I had. Dr. Slender, anything else from your end? No, thank you. Okay. Excellent. On to item number four, personal transactions, recommendations and employee, employment, employment status matters. Any comments on that or would you like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion by Jessica and a second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? If that motion passes, the consent agenda, several items on there, some financial reports in our Dane County New Teacher Project Intergovernmental Agreement.
Can I just ask a question about that quick?
Sure.
Is, for one instructional approach?
That's right.
And it says we would, we'll pay regardless of, independent of actual attendance if that person is unable to attend.
Somebody understand.
Okay. The only other thing is term of agreement, it says between the Marona area's school district.
They're the fiscal agent.
Marona?
Yes.
Oh, I thought that.
Excuse me, no, I'm mistaken, that is not true. See, so two is the fiscal agent, I think this is boilerplate. Where are you seeing that?
Section three, term of agreement.
I will ask them to revise that and then we can put it on, or I can strike it as a matter of fact.
Okay.
If that's not an important question. Absolutely. Thanks for that.
That's it. Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion by Jessica and a second by Carly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. On to our discussion items, committee member reports, PGT, Tom, you're on, leave us off.
I'd love to. We met on September 22nd and we got a report that the building grounds crew is a voice staff. Over the summer, there were 127 work requests and 125 of those were closed by the team, so that's great, great work by them. And they will, we, they probably have less to finish by now. Competition fields went from being pretty wet to needing some watering, so they'll spend some time in bed, cleaning lines on the fields. Then we went on to a transportation update, there's a CDL candidate testing on September 23rd for afternoon route, they're still looking for a wheelchair route, be to driver. Operations State Stop was September 21st through September 25th, focusing on illegal bus passing, which is absolutely a big, big safety. Got a small update on electric buses, still waiting on a few parts, but hopefully that comes around if we have that to use for our routes. We talked about policy 830 dash dot one rental use, which will be on the agenda later tonight, which we'll talk about at 10:00. As far as referendum, there was no update since our last board meeting and then our next meeting will be on, or meet in person on October 27th.
Excellent, thanks, Tom. Any questions? All right, Finance Committee, Joel.
So we met on September 8th and all the things that happened in that meeting, I'm pretty sure I've been discussed already, just to go through them. We had three different donations that were made, wrestling club with the mass and then the youth baseball club, a new batting cage at the high school, we talked about that as a cover on the board, but that will be working on putting that in and then of course the Alliance Club with their donation, their stuff, the most donation, so appreciation to everyone that's still in that matter. Then we spent some time looking at the tax receipts and budget summary in discussions with Mr. DeYoung, it's, everything seems to be where we expected to be, there's not anything unusual in terms of the numbers being out of control or something different than what we expected, so everything looks to be in good shape there. And then we meet tomorrow, not tomorrow, sorry, next week, Monday, correct? Yes.
Tomorrow and Monday.
Tomorrow and Monday, this week, we just can't stop ourselves, no. It's Monday, we meet again and we should have some final information as relates to the budget, it's a very exciting time for all of us, so, yes, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Joel? And Safety and Wellness, Jessica?
We met on my day September 15th, we spent a little bit of time talking about policy 423 part-time attendance, which we're going to talk about later tonight, and then we spent a bulk of our time talking about policy 443 address code. We had a student's vote, we had some parents speak, we had a good conversation, which took up most of our meeting. And so some of our other safety, equity and mental health updates, we postponed till this month. The one thing that I would note in terms of equity, the unified sports, it was upcoming at that point, but they've had their first game since then, so that's pretty exciting.
Cool. And also had you down for Parks and Rec if there was.
Oh, yes, but we don't meet till the 28th, so I don't have any updates since last time.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. On to our presentations, anyone who did not get a chance to listen to Mr. Craig Smith, last week, committee meeting got robbed, you get the condensed version there, but it's just amazing recording, it was so fun to hear about, so I'm waiting to see how he consolidates this into his span tonight.
Forty minutes is something.
Ask you to do an interpretive dance out alongside, you can interpret it.
Yeah, right, right. I'd like to compliment you by the way, your outfit. That is lovely.
I like the dress though, or your skirts will look very good today. Been here dressed, dressed for issues and asked this term inside all of us, all associated with it. Partner National Backwater Program's up and running, there's a lot of information on there, we're running our DP diploma-based course, each student has to take two diploma courses as long, as well as the PPS into the core, which is their service learning, culture development and those pieces of seventy hours each that go into that, that was all at the beginning. The other piece that is up and running is our career-related studies, so just like our youth apprenticeship program, IP program, has to have a course that uplifts what you're learning from the microscope of work-based career development, so whether it's hand-on youth apprenticeship or through the IP, you have to have a class that supports that. And so now we can offer in-house through our biotech, our biotech lab, we are running two childcare development courses and we're able to get same, a new set of babies and practicing those things, which is also helping try to get ready, so it's coming in March in that world that we know legislation's passed, it should be approved in March, that sixteen-year-olds can start working in daycares, because we're running another committee towards the count, so when the sixteen of above, so our students have taken child development or doing youth apprentice, you can have more student or more pupils in that room than you currently can unless they're eighteen. So we're adding some CTE, but that all qualifies as a career-related study course that packages our CTE with our healthcare pathway. And so we officially have a healthcare pathway, pathway, which means as we're currently doing our CNA, looking at what we need going into our next Perkins cycle, we're coming back because of childcare, because of the great need for healthcare in Dane County and our community in particular, that we're going to be able to now start spending some of our Perkins grant in that world, so that'll be nice, but you have to have that pathway in your building before you can spend some of those monies in that area, so we're officially eligible to start doing that now. We can keep lunar. So this is rehashing what I've already touched on, our two diploma-based courses, Sports and Health Science, we actually got to go over our first trip where we finished a unit and then we put it into application and we were able to go to Upland Health and go through their PT, how they will use and learn or use and use the instruments, some we have, some will use theirs, so students are now putting into application what they learned in unit one in physical therapy and we'll keep that relationship, they're actually coming over to us next time to do. We'll keep that relationship. They're actually coming over to us next time to do with the two student groups. We break them down into two groups of 15 and then they get to go through and have that hands-on learning experience with Upland Health. So we're very excited about that. And then I just listed some of our career-related study courses. Bring your workplace learn to our classrooms. IP, and Dr. Schlerin, I was going to be very right, I believe, on this one. IP is taking off. So through the waves, we're learning more about legislation being passed in Missouri. Where now every credit taken in IP has to be accepted by all schools in universities, college system. Indiana's now getting automatic acceptance, saying they goes through the full DP. Again, we're CP career programming school, but the amount of credits and all those things are being passed in our state. We'll soon see legislation that's going to help, but we're on IP you'll find on every state website, every, everything. So it's really been coming to life in the Midwest. In the U.S. in general, it's really taking off. But we're seeing a growth in our state as far as schools. I mean, with two schools that are DP schools that want to add CP. And now we're looking to us as one of the first to get through the gates. Us are seeing as to how you do it. So getting Teresa back this week is going to be very helpful because I need her to part my brain and get some of this done. But we're getting on those work-based learnings, but you're bringing experiential learning. You brought experiential learning to your classroom. And you have a capstone in healthcare where students are getting practical experience. Actually, if you can go to the next slide and kind of start looking at who's benefiting from this. I don't have that success story yet like I can with work-based learning, some of those things because it's so new. I think when you read through these, the one I'll hit on is we sent, we get to sit around the table discussing. We know we had seven students major in a healthcare field that went to college and we did not have this. And what they did, and God bless them, they built HOSA and there was five of them, those five we know in the healthcare. That is now over 50 students. Next Thursday, I'm going to M.A.S. and Hollis with 30 students, freshman, through seniors that are going up to practice healthcare professions, learn more about the different things under healthcare. So what our success rate is right now is we're giving our students opportunities that didn't exist one calendar year ago. And we're now being able to fund it through our grants and some other things. So we've done a lot in the years, very good. But again, our kids wanted it. We gave it to them and they showed up in masses to say, told you we wanted it. We're providing that for them. That's it for now. We'll get more after. We've been in school for a month, but that's our, we're all in, running. Times are a great job in the classroom. Kids are loving it. So we're just going to keep this growing. Questions?
All right, here. Ken, can I, Mr. Smith, please, the pipe, pipe, or our young people in our high school. Has he set us on a course for success with the IP folks who actually audit our program and give us our credential? He's also assembled a really talented group of professionals to help lead it, walk through training, through regular visits. And then, of course, the students. Success begins with success. And I credit a great deal of the success we have to our, our staff and the curiosity that our students are bringing to the work. So keep up the great work. We're still lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And great, in all seriousness, that was phenomenal last week to hear you go through the full collection of things we're doing. And the thing that came apparent to me was just, A, the synergies that you were able to find and the crossovers and our ability to combine resources where possible and outputs where possible. You know this stuff inside and out. It's so nice to have a point person running it, but it's more than like the mindset too. Like you got kids thinking about like, how do I apply this knowledge? That's so exciting.
It was fun. In one week, I reached out to Kate, I've never done ACP, I've been in a career plane, looking at third, fourth, fifth. Well, I started new researching issues, right?
Yeah.
So I'm like, well, what do we do? And then right after that, I get a call from wire about middle school ACP and doing blueprints. So now we see it all connect and figure out how we can get the big bodies down there teaching us to little bodies is what Kate and I were working on. So, okay, girl, appreciate you.
All right, thank you. Sue?
Excellent. Sue, see Organ Mental Health update. Kim, for our John. It's so beautiful. I'm just going to bring up Kim here. She's going to dress. Yeah, so Kim. How's she is? How are you? Hello?
Hello. I, I can see, but I can't hear you. Hold on, let me stick my. Okay, maybe your audio isn't hooked up here.
How about now?
Okay.
Can you hear us now?
I think I can hear you now, Steve.
It's a delight to see you, Kim. I have here with us our Board of Education and our friend and colleague, Brian Johnson, who's on the call with us tonight.
All right, excellent. Hi, everyone.
There's more of us.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you all.
Well, thanks, Kim. We, we like to have Organ Mental Health come once a year to just kind of give an update on the work that's being done in our, our schools. As you would know, Organ Mental Health provides services kindergarten now through 12th grade. And so we have some pretty great results to kind of share and how it's grown this last, last year, how it kind of grew, so.
They have your document in our board docs. Thank you for.
Oh, excellent. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. No, I'm really glad to be here to share some, some of this with you. Yeah, we, we're, we're seeing more clients, which is, which is great. We have had an increase, as you can see, from 50, from 48 to 58 students from one school year to last school year, you know, which is great. Meaning that there's going to be more appointments, more, more sessions. And I think sometimes those sessions really depend on the need for frequency and things like that. I think that, that's pretty much kind of stuck with each individual therapist too. So, so I think that's dependent upon that. As far as consultations, I put in there at least 11 times. Reason being because we don't have a great way to capture some of those. We can bill for some of our consultations, but a lot of times we, we consult a lot more in an informal way. And in also, you know, sometimes it's documented differently in a, in a contact note versus, versus a consultation note. A consultation note, something that we bill for, sometimes we can bill for it, sometimes we can't. So I just kind of put, oh, at least 11 times because that's, that's, that's the numbers that were kind of picked up there. So. We had quite a few referrals. Definitely more referrals last year than this year. Or sorry, that, that last year from, from the previous school year, 54 referrals. And there's, there's obviously some reasons why we have issues. A lot of times it's parental follow-through in, in actually signing the documents. Sometimes that they missed the appointment, sometimes they found services elsewhere. And I'm kind of wondering, you know, based on your knowledge, has there been any changes as far as being able to have like school funding, like if that were to be like a necessary thing for some kid? I know we provide, we provide a certain percentage for, I think, 5% of the total population. But I'm just kind of wondering what, what you're seeing. Has there been a change in DPI's allotment for any, you know, school funding, let's say, if we were, if we were out of network with somebody, I mean, we wouldn't be able to see them. I'm kind of curious to see if anyone has answers to that.
Thank you for asking. Unfortunately, with the latest budget biennium, we did not see any increase in mental health supports, whereas we had seen that in the last biennium. Suffice to say, we would never let a student go without any kind of help. To the extent to which we can get to a yes on that, we absolutely would.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and like, like I said, we, we do provide for that, that population of 5%, of the population. But the good news is, is that we have two clinicians that are fully licensed now, which makes it even more, it gives us more of the ability to be able to serve the population. Obviously, there's going to be outliers with certain, you know, out of network insurances and things like that. But now we have Dave and Justine, who both are fully licensed. I believe Dave got fully licensed at the end of the last school year and Justine this school year. So that makes it so that we can provide services for some of those commercial insurance companies that, that a lot of times our qualified treatment trainees are not able to bill for, you know. So this, this is good. This, this is able to kind of bump us up a little bit and be able to serve more of the population. So, so that's definitely a plus. So, yeah, and, and I, I don't, I don't know if there's any other things. I, I just, I know that I fully appreciate. And I, I speak for all of us here at Organ Mental Health Services. We're just really appreciative of, of this ongoing relationship we have with them. One more of the school district of being able to, you know, work together and collaborate and be able to provide these needed services for families, for, for kids and things like that. So, yeah, yeah.
I think one of the big benefits too within the last couple of years and a potential reason why we started to see an increase is that we've also seen a really strong consistency of the counselors being able to be within our district, which has added good continuity, good continued care and kind of that spreading the word of like, this has really been helpful for my kid. And so we really appreciate that as well.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. I think that's, that's the best way to, to, that can get spread is my word of. I think that, that, you know, I, you know, it, it's, we've had such a great ability to be able to kind of come in and support and, and work with and collaborate with all of your services staff, things like that. So I think that's, that's happening on a, a regular basis as well, is what I, what I know. Maybe, and maybe, I, I think we did receive some feedback. I think there was, I think we had Hillary Hartman did some type of research last year, I believe, and kind of we gained some feedback. I don't know if you were aware of any of those things. I think we talked about it a little bit.
Yeah, we presented it at an board meeting as well.
Right, right. So, so I think one of the feedback pieces was just more collaborative and a little bit more collaboration with actually like teachers, things like that. And so, so hopefully that, that will maybe start a little bit more too. Now that teacher maybe, and, and I don't know if, if there's, if there are things that would be in G1R and that would, that would be helpful. You know, I would really like to kind of hear some ideas about that, about what we can do to maybe make that, that information a little bit more accessible to teachers and things like that. So.
We'd love to schedule some time to visit with you on that. I love the continued partnership. We're now on year nine with Organ Mental Health. And we're so grateful for what you do. You truly made our community, our students even better. We want to do whatever we can to continue to breathe life into that relationship.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, please don't hesitate. You know, whenever, whenever we want to have those conversations, you know, that, that would be, that would be great. We, wherever we're evolving here at, at Organ Mental Health Services, we do have some, some changes that are occurring in that Mary is going to be retiring in May of 2026. And so she's stepping down it, but she'll, she'll still be kind of helping with some of the development of our doctoral office. But she's stepping away from her work. So we are anticipating a little bit of change that way. But we do have an administrative team. I'm part of that. I'm the school guest manager. We also have clinical manager. And Dave Lippman, who is a therapist, there, he's, he's the operations manager. So we're going to, we're kind of keeping it all running and hopefully we'll, we'll continue on, you know, working together. So.
Mary surrounded herself with some really great people. I count you as part of that, that, that team. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Did we, any questions?
Yeah, I was curious if anyone had anything for, for Kim and Brian? My, my only one in a general sense, and this is probably not an easy question to answer, but just the nature of the, of the visits that you're seeing with kids, how that's, if, if and how that's changed this year or in recent years?
Okay. The nature being like different, like different presenting concerns and that.
What are the issues that they're facing and dealing with?
Yeah.
Right, right?
Oh, you know, one, one of the things that I, we, we've noticed ever since COVID has been an uptick of anxiety. Anxiety has been an ever prevalent thing. What I, what I feel like I've seen more is more, more kids on the, on the spectrum, on the autism spectrum as well. I think those are present, not, not to say that we are specifically able as an outpatient facility to treat the actual diagnosis of autism, but we, you know, we work with it and there's other things attached to that. There's anxiety, there's ADHD, there's other things that we, you know, so that, that's definitely a presenting thing that, that we see. I think we've seen, I want to say probably decreased. I, I think depressed mood is still kind of there. I'm not sure about, about the level of suicidality that you know, I think those are still prevalent issues. I think we, we have, you know, certain populations that are affected more with, with those types of things. And, yeah, and I don't, yeah, I'm trying to think if there's any new things. I, I think that they're just relative. I, I, me personally, as a therapist that works in the Oregon School District, and I, I think I, I, it would, you know, I have my, my colleagues in Mountmore that would echo that about the, the autism spectrum. It's just kind of something additional and something that we actually have training for, you know, that we're able to do. But like I said, we're just not, that's not like our expertise. If we need someone to, to be treated that, you know, for those symptoms specifically, we would refer that to you. So.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll keep up the fantastic work. We're grateful for your time here this evening and we look forward to connecting with you, Brian and I, you at some point.
All right. I, I look forward to that and I thank you so much for your time tonight. It's, as always, it's a pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Kim. Thank you. Thank you, Kim.
Bye.
All right, on to our technology, our annual update from Will.
From me, I am. I'm well. We're been a technology coordinator here in the district. That's my team, minus the wider gentleman. He is now a budding freshman at UW Platteville. Working on computer security type items.
Yeah.
We affectionately call him Slappy. He's our Slappy. Just a few things that we, with last year and this year that we did. Previous year, we had 178,000 grant from the government for phone books. We did not hit that number this year for obvious reasons. But we did come up with a 33K cybersecurity grant. We're also actually tomorrow going to receive the laptops and computers from Epic. And then last year, we had $40,000 approximately in hardware. So those were items that normally we would go ahead and recycle, that they would just be gracious enough to take off of our hands and we, we actually generate a little better revenue on it, on items that we felt were. In fact, you bought one yourself and. So that, now we're going to continue to do that this year. We have a few more items left over from this past year's reconditioning that we did at the middle school. Next year up is going to be the IC building. So we'll have some more items, especially the flat handling and the racks. Next up is our network topology, topography improvements. We're always looking to improve our network from beginning to end. One of the big things that we put in is we're putting network hardware, network hardware upgrades in all of our closets so that we're replacing our older POE switches with POE plus. So that when we have new items like cameras, bait detectors, anything else, we can do clocks now. We can do the intercom systems and stuff with the door switches. We're purchasing those. Basically, they're used, reconditioned, but they're, they work for us. We installed an air fiber from the high school to the ticket booth. That was one of our things that we want to expand on with our air fiber. What air fiber does for us, we have an air fiber connection from the PC building to the high school. So if something happens, Monro, telephone company, they cut, we still have access to all of our systems in all the buildings. So that, that's one of our big things we did last year. Now we're just expanding on, upon this. That number, the 22 wireless access points is going to be wrong. We just acquired 200 Wi-Fi six capable access points, the newer generation ones from a fire sale in Florida. We, we received approximately $115,000 worth of equipment, about $1,500. Yeah, so we're, we're going to be going around and we're going to replace all of our, our older ones that are still fine, but we're going to replace them with the newer, the newer equipment as we go. So we've been getting the big push to go cloud-based Wi-Fi from a lot of vendors, a lot of, and I keep telling them that we're just going to keep adding. them that we're just going to keep adding to our system because it's already paid for. The taxpayers paid $80,000 back in 2014 for it. We feel like it still has a lot of value to us. It's a very nice system where we're just going to continue on to move in that direction. This bottom one, where the HyperV virtual server farm that we created, I don't know if you know about Broadcom. Broadcom bought VMware. It's a big deal. They're basically a company that buys other companies and they strip them down for, for parts. They raise prices a lot. So we decided to move in a different direction so we don't get caught in the crossfire of that. So we have both. We have the HyperV and the VMware so that we're running both sides of the fence. So if something happens on one side, we can do it. If it happens on the other side, we can continue on with, with no interruptions. Our high school stadium, we did find out some new things about the antenna systems out there. When there are a lot of people in the stands with their phones and stuff, so we're going to be working with some local companies that are much better at radios and stuff than us to make it better. So that when we're front and center for the WIA playoffs, you know, in the future, right, you know, when, when, you know, the official's doing this thing, that it actually works properly. But the outdoor stadium wireless, we did put one on the backside of the press box for outside wireless that worked better for the soccer field. The gentleman that was out there was trying to videotape with his, you know, with his camera on the end. He didn't have very good connection there. So we made that better. We added fiber connections to the barn, the utility barn over there. We pulled our own fiber. We terminated our own fiber. We have a 10 gig connection out there now. We're going to, our intention is to add more access points out there, cameras for the practice field on the other side, and then other cameras in other, other areas. And then, obviously, one of the big, big additions that we've done is the cold storage for our Skyware data. I don't know if you know about being hacked and having ransomware and stuff. We, we built a pretty bulletproof system that even if we were hacked and everything was stolen, we could be up and running within 24 hours. And that was a lesson learned that we learned from one of the Jamesville School District was, so we brainstormed cold storage. And that's basically our data, it's ours, and it can't be touched from, from the internet or any internal network stuff. So that was one of the big things. Another big thing is our penetration testing from, from CISA. That's the government, they come in once a month on the outside, they scanner network to see if they can break in. We're working on a new system for internal. And Dr. Slerner has introduced me to a young man that we're going to basically give him the keys to a Cadillac and let him build a system and see what he can do with it. So we're hoping that we can offer that to other school districts, something that would be cost effective for them to use. Our network documentation and password integration, that's all part of our, our network hardening program that we've started to try to make things better for us. I'm not sure what else we got left. Our long range replacement plan, we used some of the leftover money that we have from the previous year when we pre-purchased middle school replacements. Fortunately for us, when we did that, that left us a little extra money for this year. We went ahead and pre-purchased some of the stuff for the IC. So that 178,000 that we got two years ago for the Chromebooks, we kind of spread that across a couple of the years. So most of this stuff, you can see that it's going through all the staff computers and things of that, ensure all be replaced. The service tablets are for staff members. In case we have a COVID-type system, that all staff members, teachers and stuff will have a, a device capable of doing a remote learning session. And I would see the fiber runs, like I said before, we, we are able to do our own fiber. We have our own fiber splicer. So we built Wisco radio for their connections for their truck. They can just plug it right there at the bottom of the press box. No more cables running around, stuff like that. So they will, you know. So we can do that anywhere in the district. And then we're starting to do that, some of our closets, our copper closets from one place to the other, we're going to replace all of that with fiber. And we're hoping that we can do the same work for the repeater system that we're going to pull from the ELC when it comes out. Instead of paying lots of money to GenCom to do that, we feel that we can do that ourselves and pull the fiber ourselves to do it. And then have, you know. And that's just, the, the last thing on that is with the ELC construction, I don't know if there's a slide on that. Yeah, we've got a couple of contracts. Is that with the ELC, all the technology that's in there, we're not going to leave anything behind. If it has any intrinsic value, we're going to pull it. If it's not bolted down, we're going to pull it. And even if it is, we're going to try to unbolt it and take it out of there. So we're going to be busy next summer, or the summer of 2027.
Like you are busy every summer.
Right, yeah. So. And then the big one was the line wise filtering. I was informed that it was going to be about 15 to 20% higher. I negotiated with them. They sent me a proposal that had the same cost for the next three years. I literally signed it and faxed it back to them in about 30 seconds. So I saved the district about six grand over the course of three years. So. And that's all I really have. Do you have any questions for me?
There's a hint and a funny story.
Hi.
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, the conditioning cable. The conditioning cable is a special cable. Before I got here, someone pulled fiber optics from the high school to the press box. It was undocumented. Nobody knew who did it, who lit it, who did nothing. We just knew it was there and it worked. And so when we're adding these 10 gig connections, we're going from one to 10, it requires a specific type of cable. This conditioning cable forces the fiber optics to run at a specific speed. We bought two on the open market at, one was 85 and the other one was 90. And neither one of them worked very well. So our own technician, Dan, built us our own with our own fiber splicing equipment. And we haven't had any single errors on it since. So now that we know how to do that, we might make our own and sell those.
Always looking for new revenue streams. There's many things I appreciate about you, Will. Plus, you're always good for a good story. I enjoy you just personally as a, as a friend and a colleague. But I also appreciate how proactive you are. When tariffs were first announced, the first thing he did was jump on board and find out, let's lock in our prices before things skyrocket and it's paid off dividends on many occasions. And then I want to show back the, the group of people that you've surrounded yourself with because this is a really remarkable team. Three of these individuals are graduates of Mountmore High School. And just really service is their mindset?
Yes.
And being supportive of people on the front lines, their teachers doing the heavy lifting and.
Well, we have the mindset that these are their tools and we're the ones that keep up their tools. So we, you know, that's, that's our mindset. So that's how we, we approach our technology part of it. I've been in other districts where, and I affectionately call them the network Nazis, are not very communicative or they're, you know, they don't help. And so that's our thing that we want to help.
It's, it's not uncommon for me to be hearing, overhearing conversations in the school where any one of these folks will be asking staff, I'm just here, what can I do to help you? Have you been having a problem with your computer in some way? And that proactive orientation goes a long way. So thank you. Please extend our gratitude to your entire team. Just really remarkable work.
That's what Wayne Wednesday is for.
Yeah. He takes it off lunch on Wednesdays. We get paid on Wednesdays.
Yes.
Scott, did you ever get invited? I didn't.
The wings have been delicious, guys.
Truly great work. Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
On the, the networks that not moving into the cloud space, I'm not sure there's costs and is it a help? How long would you anticipate that we could continue to do that?
I would estimate we have at least seven years worth of life out of our wireless, at least seven. The latest Wi-Fi seven, and the eight hasn't been ratified. Seven is like super, super new. So it takes three to four years for, you know, your phones and your, to, to come into existence with that. But with Wi-Fi six, there's more than enough bandwidth. And especially with our new access points going from a two by two antenna to a four by three, there's more coverage and it's just a better access point. So.
We'll hit Wi-Fi six with the new ones that we got out of Florida.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you figure seven years at least before we have?
Yeah, they, I get, I get calls all the time saying, hey, we'd like an upgrade. I'm like, yeah, I don't want to pay $20,000 a year. And some of the gentlemen that I was with in the conference was stating that, hey, we got to pay $18,000 a year just to have our access points in the building, whereas ours are paid for.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, we know that you're usually here by 6:00 AM and you've got to drive tonight. So if you wanted to head out, we would understand.
Okay.
Safe travel, our best, okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. Don't worry, the, the tax sales coming up. There we go.
Now that I know that you guys have built everything electronic, I can ask questions while I'm here.
All right, our action items. We do not have a full board tonight. We just have a couple of first readings up. So we'll have to not take action, but obviously encourage any other questions and shaping of the, the policies for the next time. First reading here is revisions to number 423, part-time attendance.
Yes.
Coming from SAW and Gray Council.
So this is kind of, this policy is specifically in reference to students who have three categories, private schools, tribal schools, and students who are home schooled, who maybe want to come in and take one or two classes through the school. And so this is really just taking feedback from our lawyers about feedback to be able to do it. We really took out what you can see from the top about being a resident. Really, they just have to be in like, they have to meet our enrollment criteria, right? We don't have to say resident. They just have to meet our enrollment criteria. And so that was one of the biggest pieces to the policy. The other policy, when you go further down into home school students, is that students who are at the elementary and middle school levels can only take non-academic courses. So they can't come in and take a reading or a science class. It could be the music classes and the art diet, some of those classes. And again, as, as always, there has to be, and so there has to be a room in those courses. And then the other big change is kind of towards the end about enrollment because we had dates in there. We should never have dates because as next year or the beginning of the school year starts different. So it just is, we put like what the statutory limits of when you have to announce it, whether it's seven weeks or two weeks, when we give that information. And then the end, we just have made it considered to be appealed or we made it an administrative appeal, not that it would come to the school board. And I specifically wrote a little bit further down the lawyer's rationale for why it wouldn't need to come to you for that. But those are, those are the basic changes.
Brian, can you, I may need to touch on this, but could you just revisit quickly forming that change off the, the lives in district that, that the labels that got stripped out there, the reasoning behind that one?
Yeah, it basically just, they took out the word of a resident and basically said each resident, like meets enrollment criteria.
Okay.
Which for us is you're either a resident, maybe you're homeless, or you are holding enrollment.
Okay, that's, that's where you're involved in most part of that too.
Yep.
I think one other, the, one other question I had, it looked to me like in the, the home days, private education, there was maybe just a carryover in language. Had a reference there of participation by students who attend private or tribal schools in the home base section in the green. Oh, that got struck.
Oh, yeah.
We saw the earlier version.
Yeah, I figured it was a cut.
Perfect. Any other comments or questions? All right. We'll hold on that one.
Love to.
Clear this spot.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Brian. Next up is our first reading on number 830, fraudulent use of the high school fine arts facilities referred by BGT. Scott, do you have?
Hi, everybody. Well, most of you, I think, are at that September 22th BGT meeting. The policy as it currently shows has three parts of A and B and C. And as we went through the variety of revisions that we thought needed to be made, a good point was brought up, I think, Jill Cruz. Section B really got into the nuts and bolts of the, sort of the administration and taking care of the facility. And Kellen Darner did a great job. Thank you, Kellen, for providing us a variety of revisions that he thought needed to be made. So sections E and C essentially will remain in the policy with some subtle changes. Section B really gets into the nuts and bolts of administering the facility. So we thought moving that into an admin break would make a lot more sense. So those are things like dealing with costs, the labor needs for folks that are reserving the facility. Kellen created an online application for reserving the facility. So that helps on the maintenance side, equipment that's needed, staging, lighting, all of that kind of thing. Making sure the facility not only provides the renter with the things that they need, but also ensuring that the facility is taken care of, the stage floors being protected, the walls and so on. So all of that is spelled out in the current policy, middle section, section B, then we would move over into the admin break. And I don't take credit for that because Steve was kind enough to take that section B and move it into the, into the admin break. So I know this is the first reading. Starting now, pause if there's any questions. Again, kudos to Kellen for putting together a, a system that's online that allows him to be able to work with folks outside to get the facility they need in a kind of manner and being able to do it with some tracking on his side.
The application, is it on our website?
Yeah, it's a, a virtual application that they can do it online and they just upload their, upload their insurance forms. I was just going to look at this again. I'm remembering the specifics. I'll take a look at it later, but just wondering about the penalties for violation of any of this stuff that's spelled out here as well. They're, they're not. You know, I think as taking a cue from the board, which is you know, to seek cause in an accepting way. I don't, in the 10 years I've been here, I've not had anyone violate anything that has been. We just usually say, hey, help us to understand, how can we help you? And we, we should get to a yes. And if, if we feel like that would be helpful, I'm happy to, to look at putting it in, in reg of some sort. It might be, maybe be something like just a period of time where they could use the facilities until they remedy whatever issue there is or not looking for a pound of flesh or.
Right.
And you also have in here that, you know, you can deny for any reason. So if you're like, wow, they kind of made a mess last time. So not this time, you know.
Yeah, that's, that sounds good. All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Our last item on the action portion is the, concerning the renaming of the Early Learning Center in PC to Mountmore Elementary School. How great is that? We are so excited. It's the next step in our, our evolution towards the new addition. We recently asked the community, hey, tell us, what do you think? Would you like to see this combined, combined building look like? And you can see here, the staff response and the community response was the same. They're all very excited in the Mountmore Elementary School. We see the orange there. And it was about that margin of 55%. And so we're requesting of the board tonight to direct the superintendent to begin that process that would start in the 2027, 28 school year. The only other thing I can think of that would be important as it relates to naming is going to be the address. That will change too, because as you know, the address is on Academy Street. And now the front of the school will be on Second Street. So we'll work to figure out how to change that. But in the interim.
We'd love very much to see if this meets with your group. Is there a process involved with this? Like, how do we notify DPI and all that stuff? Tell me a little bit about that.
Yeah, so it's as simple as me writing them a letter. Yeah, so it's as simple as me writing them a letter.
Okay.
I thought it was gonna be something really dramatic.
Super, give them a minutes to the meeting.
Yeah.
We'll be ready to rock. I think I need to call quite a little.
Nice. I was wondering the same thing, because I thought, oh, if we did wanna change the IC at any point to the intermediate school, not center, I was like, well, if you're going through the words, should we just do both right now? But it's that easy. It doesn't matter when.
I assume the address will be a lot more complicated.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'm grateful that you mentioned the IC, because it would be the only center in our district that ever, just tangentially throughout the, the district, that there might be something to add and could be considered an intermediate school as opposed to an intermediate center. Happy to do some polling like we did here, or if, how, how, if you're interested in pursuing that, I'm happy to do that.
I think yes.
I thought it was, it made sense. Maybe check it out. It's board.
Or, or had four excellence on the back.
Those are the two options.
Yeah, exactly.
Didn't wanna show off.
I wouldn't look right at you.
It's not, I won't.
No. That's all right.
Motion to approve the change of school name to Mount Hore Elementary School. Second.
Motion by Jessica, and a second by Karine. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Got a new school name? Dr. Schlerin, any second half citizen comments here? No. We're grateful that our friends from PFLAG come out, and again, congratulations to you all. Thank you. All right, we've got our scheduled next meetings listed. As was mentioned before, next week, we have a special virtual finance committee followed by SAW, we've got BGT on the 27th early, that's at the district office. And then, our next full board meeting is on October 27th. At this point, we would go into a contemplated closed session, sections 19.821 and 19.851 C and E, discussion of status and collective bargaining with the Mount Hore Education Association regarding a 2025-26 collective bargaining agreement, including potential to provide declaration of impasse in position of offer. Do we have a motion on that front?
Second.
Motion by Jessica and a second by Joel. This will be a vocal vote. Go in. Joel?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Karine?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. We will go into closed session and reconvene in five minutes.